Thank you, Jonathan, I'll start us right on time here.
Sewage, water in the sewage.
Well, I know Kate will be joining us today.
I think um.
Kate's coming back from Utah.
We've got people coming in online right now.
Oh, Janine?
Ed's online too.
Okay.
I was sick Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. She was out just.
Oh, she told me she wasn't gonna be at the meeting.
It's better.
Yeah.
And she was gonna try to be online.
There are like loading boats coming back. Well, greetings, everybody. I just want to welcome everyone to the June tenth, twenty twenty four, City of Idaho Springs work session. And the most I've ever had is seven items, and we're gonna tie that tonight with seven items. And Janine and Ed, it's good to have you. I know that you're online. And if you have questions, please speak up and and we'll get you in. We're gonna start off with a powerhouse restoration. And Creston, Tim, please come on up. So I thought we have some pretty good renderings here of what, you know, this could potentially look like.
Yeah, we had a great site that's out there with everyone.
It kind of, the scope of the project kind of expanded after we went out there, because everyone felt like there was, there's a lot of opportunity.
That happened.
We don't realize until you go out there how much space is there. Like, I only thought it was a very small place by the powerhouse. I didn't realize it went further south.
Right, right.
It's really a lovely site.
So originally, our, our charge was to restore the powerhouse and we had planned on Ibrona. So on the wall, no, I guess not.
I don't wanna take an outfit up.
A pointer here, we can point out what we, what we saw and.
Mayor Council, while we're waiting, just as a reminder, the Hanes spoke with Council about the report that they prepared. Start structure assessment, Idaho Springs Powerhouse, and that was back in two thousand thirteen. So this project has been a long time coming. The assessment was done, and now we wanna get the restoration done, but then, as I just referenced, there's some opportunity to improve the site and maybe make it into a small park. So that's where, that's where we're headed with this. We just wanted to get some feedback from you all as far as the conceptual designs and thoughts that are being presented here.
John, do you have the, the PDF of this that we produced, the site plan?
No, he's got it.
You want him over here with the pointer? Is that the other?
It's kinda hard to see it here, but.
For your viewers.
I'll, I'll follow you with them. Okay, so. There's his arrow. Okay, I guess it doesn't shine on the screen. North is to the, to the left. So originally, we had the powerhouse. And then we, there's a, there's a flat area next to the powerhouse that we thought would be a good place to put picnic tables, benches, that sort of thing. And then we saw that there was an opportunity to put some stairs coming down from that flat area down to the creek, which is very nice. There's a sort of a flat area along there that we could, you know, activate for, for little kids, maybe the, the waiting or even adults. Um, there's a, there's two lines coming off the corners of the powerhouse, and that indicates an area that we think uh, we need to do some tree trimming, so that, so that when you drive by Soda Creek Road, you actually see the powerhouse. Right now, the, the trees are really dense there. You can't see it. And so we want to take, take out, we're proposing to take out every, all the trees, maybe smaller than a four inch diameter galper. And then, standing on the road, try to remove all the lower branches from all, all the remaining trees, so that the upper canopy is still there, but you can see the, you can see the building from the roof.
It really is a nicely wooded site, so we do wanna retain, you know, trees as much as possible and allow.
So to the east, there's a steep slope, uh, that would be on the upper part, which is very nice, and there's not much we can do activity-wise there, but it's a nice backdrop to this area. And then along Little Bear Creek Road, you'll see there's that, the creek is running off to the east, I guess. Sorry, sorry, the sort of southeast. And it's not shown on this plan, but there's a, there's a, there's a pond there, like the creek comes out, and there, there was a dam put in sometime around nineteen, was it nineteen oh five, nineteen ten, something like that? Yeah, is that right? So this, uh, this pond, uh, is basically, uh, a place where they collect water and then they put it into a pipe that runs down and, and feeds the, uh, the water mill. The water wall, the water wall, and the water pole, and the water, oh, the water pole too. So, uh, along that, along that stretch of the creek from where the road is here, uh, there's a, there's a flat area that's, that's got a few trees, and it could very easily be improved, so we could put more benches or, or picnic tables. There's, there's lots, there's lots of area along, along the existing road that we can, we can improve for that sort of activity. Also, one other thing to point out is there's an existing gate that's right there at the beginning of that road. It's, uh, it says private property, no trespassing, and in actuality, the private, the, the property line is a hundred feet farther up the road to, to the north. So we're proposing that that, that gate be moved so that the general public can get to the powerhouse without having to have a, give you a lock gate. So.
And then we thought it'd be nice to have an interpretive sign, you know, right near the entry into the site, you know, with some information about the history of the powerhouse and mining.
Yes, let's give us some examples of that, I think would be very fitting.
Yeah, yeah, we did provide some ideas about how to treat the site. And so you'll see on this handout, you know, we talked about maybe some stone and wood barriers or defining the site boundaries, trying to keep it as natural as possible. Um, and then for the ground treatment, uh, we're showing some crusher finds, you know, for maybe the walkway and the area where the picnic tables would be located.
As far as the wood treatment, do you think, um, some auditory poles would be fine?
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah. Do you have some?
Well, I had a call into, uh, this surgeon about, uh, asked what he does with old ones and, uh, he said it could be about six years.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be perfect for defining the edges of the pathways and, or, sorry, like, uh, or walks.
Well, and steps too.
That could use the steps.
Jimmy, you feeling all right?
I am.
I'm just not used to you being on that side of the table.
I know, right? Somebody stole my parking spot over there. No, no, I'm just kidding. Sorry.
Can I, I have to grill your thoughts to give him a hard time.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
But that's, uh, that's pretty good to know that Paul might have a line on, uh, these poles.
Are you sure?
Yes. I like your interpretations of doing this in a very natural sense. It's a very wooded area. I would not want that to be too developed.
Uh-huh, I mean, that's only one opinion. Just, I would like that to stay natural.
Yeah, that's how we feel too. So anyway, moving on, you can see, you know, we've got some ideas for benches and picnic tables. Those benches are kind of rustic, you know, we thought it'd be nice to have some benches, you know, along the creek, you know, where you could sit, read, or look at your phone.
Nobody goes back.
Yeah, right.
You have wifi out there. Right, you wireless routed next door, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right. Um, and signage, um, you know, we provided some examples. Again, we thought it'd be nice to have an interpretive sign at the entry to the site. Um, um, then we've got some photos of steps down to the creek, you know, they could be stone, they could be wood. And then finally, at the very end, uh, the door treatment, uh, the powerhouse is missing that steel plate door. So we do plan on replacing it. These photographs were actually taken in Brentwood, Colorado. Uh, we worked on the town hall there, and there's a jail with the backs, separate structure. And these doors, um, were around the jail. We thought maybe, you know, if you wanted to still secure the powerhouse, but have it open to the public, if you inside, maybe you might wanna do something like this interior door with the bars.
I like that. I know that's not the original door, but I like the exterior door looks a lot like the original.
Yes, it does.
Pictures of, I want it to be open and still see it.
Then you could set up an exhibit inside if you wanted to, you know, dynamite boxes of power cakes.
Power cakes. Looks like at, at the, oh, the courthouse.
Yes.
At the.
Jailhouse.
Yeah, there's the old jailhouse is still there with the, the original.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Silver, Silver Blum has a jail like that.
Yes, yes, you're correct. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I forgot about that.
I would, I like that, because I've wondered about with the original steel door, how could we still have something that was a visual like interest of people that look inside. I like this solution.
Now, we could make the interior door look more, you know, careerish, like you would distinguish it more from, you know, historic. It was maybe some of the time, but anyway, it's time for it.
Because then there's the possibility, if you, if you wanted to run electricity to the site, there, there is elec- electricity. You could run it, you could underground it.
When you look at the original plan, um, your original site plan, and it says that, um, you have to, you take, look, how far will that go up? Let go all along city property?
Yes.
Because that property stretches by ways down along the creek.
Yeah, we went up there, you know, with our, um, city staff. And, um, I don't know how much further it goes beyond where Tim was talking about, where the.
Hundred and fifty feet, maybe, something like that, two hundred feet?
But I think everybody was kind of excited, because it's sort of a flat area over there also, and it might be a good place, you know, to bring your family and let kids maybe walk out late and water, because it's very shallow, um, like that work area.
Yeah, well, always be shallow. We, it is a reservoir, so we do have to dredge it from time to time.
You wouldn't allow people to get into that pond, would you?
I don't see why not. Steve goes up there to sweat.
Really?
Right now, there's a fence around it. You take the fence out, remove the fence.
We want that one.
That, that does. That's a concern. Well, some white buoys, SS Idaho Springs on there.
I think that's something we, I mean, we would have to talk about, because as much as I like water, it doesn't take much for little kids to get into trouble in water.
Yeah, you know, in Kittredge, they have a park there, and the creek runs right next to the park, and they have, you know, kids go in there and wade. Um, you know, so they do have signs, though.
Lots of signs.
Yeah. But I understand what you're saying.
I love the idea, though, that we could make this a much bigger park. We don't have a lot of park space here. We're not doing anything else with this property.
I guess I was thinking also, you know, we were here for a previous work session, and there was discussion about the improvements to the existing park here in Tenon, um, with the water, new water features. Um, so we thought, well, maybe a natural water feature would be better than one that's made. But anyway, that was just right on.
So if this is a reservoir one, um, where is it? Somewhere in Denver, where the creek, actually, they built little reservoir channels that you can go in, so they don't have if you had to do something like that, could we?
I think there's all sorts of possibles we can do there. We do have water rights in that area, and what should we use to them? I don't know if it actually meets. I'd have to see what our water rights usage are for, for something like that, especially in that area.
Well, I was thinking more of like, if we had areas where we could funnel people to, where it's safer than to be, they won't be on rocks, maybe on some kind of concrete, like, I know that's
Water park.
Like, not even a water park, but taking some of the risk of little kids slipping on, on blocks.
Stand by. I think, well, this is all sand, this is all surrounded by sand. What we dredge out of there is essentially a sand.
Okay.
I, I learned for like twenty years, I mean, if you were there, you could set it up in a way that would be safe. You could, you could, you might not want them to be access, like, everything in there, but I think it could be, like Paul said, I think you could set it up in a way that would be reasonable.
As long as we can, like, that's, that would be my only concern, because I love the idea of a natural park. I love the idea that we're using this land. Um, I just.
You can't put gates and fence. If it became dangerous because of a runoff condition or something of that nature, we could always close it down and fly it.
Well, I, I, I was in, spent the weekend in Craig this weekend, and the, one of their, their new features for their town was a, was a new, new water park that they had enough, obviously, you know, acre feet of water and/or rights to the Yampa River that they built this big water park. Right, because, you know, let's face it, like, you know, Henderson's Close, or so they say. So is Caldwell Trapper Power Plant up in Martin County, which Jeremy knows, obviously, that, you know, that's kind of where the, the whole entire town you know, thrives. Um, but they, you know, they're, they're starting to kind of look into, well, and so they, they built this big water park, and I actually spent a lot of time with another city member, um, over the weekend, that you know, he, he was a big involvement in, you know, advocating for this. Which, you know, it's like the skate park for the kids, or and/or, but, you know, for the adults too. It was actually a really cool deal, but they were using what they already had. Right, I, I mean, as far as the, the foundation of source. Which I thought, man, we, you know, we have, we're so high up on, you know, on Clear Creek, that and maybe it's, I don't know, but I thought, man, that was a pretty cool idea. It never even crossed my mind, I thought. But we went by the, the water park, and it was actually really, really cool. And he said, actually, you know, the upfront cost of it was exponential, but the recyclable amount of water that they use, you know, as time went on, I mean, it depleted down of you know, what they were actually using, taking, and then, uh, you know, giving back to, you know, Ed and Paul. That's waste, what, was pretty minimal towards the end, so, I don't know.
It's lower maintenance.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think once it's done, it's just kind of done, you know, you got what needed.
How can you use some of our existing water rights to do more water features?
Well, I don't, I don't know any of that. That's way above my category, but, but that, I know that we have, you know, pretty, pretty high up like, in line for, for.
Yeah, we have pretty, pretty.
Oh, yeah.
Superior rights.
Yeah, 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 we're with, you know, yeah, we're pretty senior team.
Second oldest in the state.
And, and, and what do we, what do we not use versus what we're allowed to, Mayor? Right, and there are.
You're not using water for purpose, but if you contain it, you have to count for evaporation. Well, unless you're gonna account for evaporation on an annual basis, that's your use.
Right.
With an improved use, you're okay.
Well, what we let go, that what we're entitled to.
Yeah, but it's what you evaporate by, by containment is what, in this situation, we're talking about water rights.
Right.
You have to calculate that out, and you have to count for it, and it's not that hard to do.
Sure.
That's what got a lot of the private landlords in trouble with Colorado with on water rights, is they built ponds that weren't, had an evaporation rate throughout the year. Essentially, that was taking water.
It's wasted, it's wasting water.
You have to account for evaporation within that.
This is essentially a rectangular shape of the use of that lake.
Well, sure, it's pretty simple to say.
But whether they wasted the water or let it go by them, by their own property instead of trapping it, letting it, it wasted, it's still wasting water to them, to that person or.
Well, um. I mean, I, I, I just to make sure that, uh, the direction is, uh, is clear. What do you think about what the signage that they've given us some examples of?
I like the rock signage.
Picnic tables, I mean.
Love it.
The rock signage and like the rustic wood piece.
Yeah, that was cool. That was really cool.
National Park look. I, I like that. I think that fits with the.
Does, does anybody want to see anything different that was not depicted?
Just a question, would these benches be the kind of benches that maybe we build a bench and allow these memorial benches?
Uh, allow the benches to be what?
Memorial, like, people can put a memorial plaque on them?
Currently, all benches in the city, there's no restriction.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have that programmed, so yes. These will be a different style of bench, though, with these wooden or split log type benches, and maybe it could be something that, uh, we have simply added a backer to or something.
All right, so, uh, thumbs up from us. Uh, we, we like, uh, what we're seeing there, so thank you very much. It was looking really good.
Thank you.
By the way, the powerhouse, uh, we didn't talk about the roof of the powerhouse, but it's completely, it needs to be completely replaced. Everyone knows that, so.
But the, the structure itself is in pretty good shape.
Yeah, pretty good.
I mean, relatively speaking.
It needs to be reappointed. That's about it, really. It's pretty, the issue is in pretty good shape.
And the floor is kind of missing, I think. There's a lot of stuff that's been thrown in there.
I think it's dumping, the, we went and saw it this earlier this year. It was kind of a dumping.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, it was obviously, I mean, at least to me, it had been party central.
Well, this is party central. Let's say, say, I think.
And you know, I think, uh, reducing those, uh, those low limbs on some of those mature trees and then eliminating the juvenile trees, I think actually more eyes would be on it, and it would probably lessen some of that, uh, you know, disposal of junk, misuse, yeah.
And if you're asking lighting maybe out there, possibly?
Yeah, my hope is it takes on much more of a recreational family kind of atmosphere than it's, it's, uh, something that's private, that you can party with impunity, you know, type of a thing that's been for decades.
Well, I'm excited to see.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we will move to the multi-jurisdictional housing authority. Uh, I hope everybody gets any chance to, uh, to review that. Uh, Jonathan, uh, anything else you'd like to add there?
Sure. Well, I just wanted to tell you guys, this document, I ended up rewriting the one that the consultant gave us. Um, and the reason I did it is because we've had meetings with all the communities, and the important thing here is to prioritize, but what I heard from all of the boards and, um, council here is that we need to make sure we prioritize local control, these stuff we put in the resolution that we talked about. And so this document is designed to make that abundantly clear, like, the intention of what the document is for. So the Colorado revised statutes really give, we can't really say what, uh, what one of these housing authorities has the authority to do. They can, they can, they can, they're gonna have the authority to do what a multi-jurisdictional housing authority does. They can make their own choice not to engage in certain powers like condemnation if they want to. But I tried to make some processes in here that make it clear that that requires a super majority, just to get back to that local control idea.
See that, two thirds?
Yeah, and I was just thinking, like, anything we could do here to strengthen the idea that each community gets to make decisions for its own community, and we're just working collaboratively is what we wanted. Um, I tried to, also, when we're talking about kind of what the authority is going to do purpose-wise, give them some pretty broad-based goals to, to kind of achieve, because what we really want them to do is to align themselves to the land use goals of each community and then the county as a whole. And so I think that, that these are broad enough, but also narrow enough that we don't have any scope creep from what the housing authorities should do. Um, other than that, the only other thing I wanted to tell you is there is a section in here about budget. Um, that needs to be worked on just a little bit, and basically the angle that I think we need to go with this document, you'll see there in section four point four funding, right now, um, the county person that I've been working on has wanted to, like, set everything to a contribution for each community. I'm not a fan of that. I don't think this is the direction we need to go. What I would prefer to do is change the section, and this has come to you again before it would be approved. But basically, what we would do is instead is we'd list the, 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 um, kind of anticipated operating budget for years one, two, and three, which we should be able to determine, and big cost there is gonna just be funding the person. Um, we've been looking to figure out how much this person needs to make, and Andy and County Manager Bozart have been looking at salary surveys and trying to figure out what this person needs to make. We think we can really get the cost of this organization pretty lean the first three years, because what we're gonna do is say, if there's like, uh, projects happening in Idaho Springs, we're probably just gonna have Nick and Carmen review it. We don't need to have another lawyer involved, because Idaho Springs can take that cost on, because it's our project. Or if there's a developer, they're a lawyer to do it. So we don't think that there needs to be a huge legal expense here. Also, office-wise, I think that there's an opportunity to house this person, maybe even at the senior center. They're open to giving them that small office space, just like somewhere to, to meet, for like maybe four or five hundred bucks a month. So this cost that you see reflected in this contribution schedule is not what I would anticipate it being. I think we can get it down significantly faster. The big one is if you're gonna do this, you need to hire a housing director that has the finance background and development background to make a difference, because if you don't, you're just spending money on nothing. So that's what I would like to change, that's section four point four, but I just don't have all the numbers yet.
And, uh, Jonathan, uh, I know in funding had talked about in this document uh, grant money, and it would seem to me, uh, I, I know nobody has a crystal ball, but it does seem to me that in years one through three, the likelihood is that we would be successful with some grant.
The county has already applied for one that we should hear about in the next week or two.
Oh.
If we get that, it will fund at least one, if not all three of those years.
Oh, wow.
So it may end up being a really minimal contribution, and that's the other reason I want to go with this anticipated budget idea, because then we can all know what we need to budget annually or whatever, and then we can figure out a methodology that works, because we know, you know, Silver Blum just doesn't have the resources that we have, and we still want them there at the table, so.
Right.
I think we can figure that out if we can figure out the budget.
So would be versus a required contribution would be an anticipated budget?
Yeah, and then what I would suggest is either the board or like somehow, we can do it at the IDA as well, but if we can agree on what the budget is, it makes it a lot easier to determine what everybody else is spending. Whereas what I was feeling like was the, the, what, the direction that they were going, which I know why they were going that way, because it's easier to say how much money you have and then work backwards, but they wanted everybody to commit to a certain amount of money, but we didn't even have, like, the numbers that we needed like, for the housing director. So I just proposed that we just we just say, like, this is what we need, we got it as soon as possible. You know, there's things like printing, maybe they can have help from the different, like, maybe it's Idaho Springs Project Bullprints. You know, things like that, like, do we have to buy a printer? You know, we can, we can cut a lot of this cost out of it and, and make it pretty, you know, like I said, we, we're gonna have to do an audit. That's one thing that's a little bit pricey. But I don't think we want another government running around without an audit. Yeah, I mean, it's really not a great practice anyway, so. But there's, the, what we were trying to do is pare it down to the bare minimum expenses for the first three years, so that they can generate, you know, they're gonna have some opportunities to generate revenue. Or points, one of the things that we talked to them about, about on the de restrictions thing, and it's not a part of the contract, but that potentially the housing. Essentially, the housing authority could be the managing entity for those apartments, which are giving the revenue stream. And that's something that we think could be a feasible revenue stream in the future, it's if they take on more of those projects and then they're, you know, then we got a good. Landlord essentially, and and they can get some money out of that, because ultimately what we'd like to see is this organization be as self-sustaining as possible without having to go to. Any other funding source, so that's kind of the direction that I went with this document, I did run this past the county. The next steps for this would be, if you guys are generally comfortable with this, we need to nail down that funding section, and then this would need to go. Once, once we're okay with this and the county's okay, since we're kind of the co-sponsors of this grant, then we need to get Silver Plume, Empire Georgetown on board. But we wanted to give them kind of a completed document. Um, that kind of passes legal muster of muster, not muster, of the city and and the county before they see it, so they can just review it and then. Hopefully, we'd be on track to sign this IGA so that we can um appropriate the funds for twenty twenty five.
I would, I like your idea of estimated budgeting, because what happens if Georgetown can't contribute or we can't contribute? Like, you you sign an IGA and says you go give.
Yeah.
I like that when we first get started, I like to have a little flexibility.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, I think uh. One thing that people would have had a hard time with is if. These individual towns didn't have uh say over these projects, and clearly, they do. So I, 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 I'm actually looking, very much looking forward to uh this housing.
That was the only question I had, I wanted to make sure that I made that abundantly clear in the agreement, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with the language I used for that.
Glad you did, let me uh just go around, Jimmy, anything you would like to add or uh see different there?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, Jeremy?
No, that's true.
Alright, uh Scott?
I missed supposed to, so I can't.
Alright, and uh Lisa, uh, any further thoughts?
No, I like it, and um, I really do like the idea that's in here that this is gonna be pretty more self-funding. I think that's really important, but I also think, and I don't know how to do this, I'm just throwing these out there, not to kill a wrench in it. But making it um advantageous for all of the entities that participate, even though they maintain local control. It's actually advantageous to put our affordable, attainable, whatever our housing, it's not market by housing, into this pro- this. Program, like how is it, how do we even help make that advantageous, then maybe something logistically further down the road?
Well, this is, oh, sorry. No, 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 wasn't there something in there, kind of the amount everybody was gonna do or?
Yeah, and that's what I was saying is, they had kind of made those numbers up, they're once, they're pretend. So if we, if we clarify that a little bit, so we get the budget, you know, that bare bones budget, what we need to just get moving. Then I think it it solves a lot of the problems we're having with everybody having sort of left it, because like. You know, the the fact of the matter is, that's a pretty significant amount of money for us to be putting into something, we need to get something out of that. And so I want to make sure that we get in that first three years that this person, whoever it is, has a good chance to be successful. Get projects off the ground, but if, then like these deed restrictions, it's enough deed restrictions, it's gonna be some work for whoever that is, and Nick brought that point up at our last meeting. So, if they can manage those, you know, that helps the city out, maybe there's, maybe there's other management things they can do.
Four points too.
It does, it helps.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Somebody else's hands.
But if we can diversify that revenue a little bit, just make it so, you know, if you're getting ten or twenty thousand dollars here, ten or twenty thousand dollars there, all of a sudden. You're paying for your staff person and then that's really what we gotta cover, is just that staff time, because the other stuff, like the mayor said. With all the money in housing right now, we're not gonna be spending money on on the actual projects, we're just gonna be getting grants and things like that, so. It should be, it should work if we get to the where we get, I just want to make sure we get a person who. Has the time and the knowledge and the experience to actually do something besides talk about housing, so.
Who's on hiring, you have a hiring mission group?
Well, I think what we do, if we get this IGA formed, the next step would be each community would need to appoint their board member. The other question I had in here that I didn't mention is that I, there is a possibility that it might make sense to have like a at-large member, like maybe. You know, like maybe have somebody like Loveland's here, or somebody like on a rotating basis, but like a community or the school district, somebody like that. That could sit on the board too. Um, there, I think there's pros and cons to that, they wouldn't be contributing, so like, it might not be fair to give them a whole vote. But maybe there's like another way to do it, like an advisory board or something that just says, where they could say what they care about. But anyway, what I would think would happen is the IGA would get formed, and then we'd all have to figure out the budget appropriation, or if we get the grant, that's great. And then we'd all have to appoint our, our members to the board, and then that board would be responsible doing an annual report to the city and all the, all the entities. And then we'd probably let them kind of have some wherewithal to like hire their person, but that would be. With the approval of each community, because that the board member would answer the community, you know what I mean, so they would, we would probably want them to hire that person ultimately, just so that they. Yes, so that they have the right relationship.
So would it become a special clinical district?
No, it's like a, it's not too different than the district, they have some powers that districts have, like. But I don't think they're gonna be, there's like not gonna be.
So they wanna be criminals, that's all I think I'm saying.
Right, right, yeah, they'll be, they'll be, this is gonna be like the cities. There's gonna be governing documents and everything is gonna be controlled by each city. They're not gonna be able to do taxing or anything like that unless there's like a vote, like if everybody wants to do it, they could, but they don't.
So there's no benefits in that.
Oh, no, it would be like, it would be probably one of you guys that would sit on the board.
Not this guy, but.
Yeah.
No.
And and John's right, it usually is the board itself interviews.
They're usually the ones that pick their own people too to say yes and all that shit, I'm stuffed.
Typically, you guys would appoint someone, whoever that person was, if you wanted.
So we would be in charge of the members of that, of your member, yeah, of our men.
Oh, okay, cool.
Alright, alright, uh Jonathan, do you need any further direction on this?
I just wanted to make sure that the budget thing was okay with you guys and if there was anything else that just. Came up, um, that you want to make sure we covered. I, you know, I think everybody's on, I think we're pretty close to getting this thing across the finish line if we can agree on the, on the details of that stuff, so, yeah.
Alright, uh, uh, John was, uh, I I realize that the numbers are, are, you commit. Uh, it's unclear what the total budget will be, okay? Um, and I realize the allocations here are a bit arbitrary, um. What about having some sort of formula for each contribution, whatever the amount is for each of the entities to contribute, any thought on that?
We did look at a couple of different models for that, one was population based, but that doesn't necessarily. It, well, I I think the hardest, I'm just speaking frankly, this has been a little bird and cats, to get everybody. To this point and just making everybody feel comfortable with what happening, and it's not in a bad way, it's just you're, you got a lot of different.
Pieces.
Decisions that need to be made, and so we, we looked at the population thing. Silver Plume and Empire, their big concern is they want to be represented and they want to have a say, but they just don't have the same money, I mean, it's the same conversation. So we want them at the table because it, we, to make it work, we really need everybody. Um, Georgetown also, Georgetown is the only one that, one of the other kind of intricacies here is Georgetown passed a lodging tax. That they're allowed to do, but it took out of the general county lodging tax, which is being used to fund the county's part of this, so. That's kind of also thrown a wrench in it, because that was one of the primary sources that we're thinking about using to fund this, so. Um, the key thing has been is just kind of like making everybody feel comfortable, so that methodology might still be the way, population or. Or something, but we just haven't, I think, well, we we just need to see what everybody agrees to.
I guess where my mind was going is if you had some sort of um, uh, formula. That was in the IGA, but not necessarily the numbers. And you know, you said something like, whatever the budget is, it's agreed upon by the group, and then here's how much, what percentage each entity contributes. And then, then you're not, this is a little awkward in my mind, because it's gonna change, and you're never gonna. I A resign every time you change the numbers like that.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
So I'm just thinking maybe take these numbers out here, I like the budget idea, but say something about, you know, uh, budget will be established and. And here's what percentage these entities will pay, or something like that. And I realized you brought some good considerations as far as the, it maybe population alone might not be the best way to break it down, and then Georgetown has a tourism. Money, so I realize it's a little more complicated, but however they, each entity gets their money, this is a percentage they pay.
Contributions, it's just gonna do, it doesn't then have to fund it.
Yeah. Okay.
Use it openly.
I can. Do we have a methodology we use on the fire very much, for like city contribution?
Yeah, well, it's. Yeah, it's, it's, it's equivalent, no equivalent, so it's probably. But it's the same, same general idea, the certain rates, because. Percentage, if you know I'm the approval is X, and I'm responsible for whatever percentage on a annual basis. It's up to us to figure out how we want to fund it, which allows a little bit of creativity within organizations. Year, year over year, depending on, sales tax up, great, maybe we're gonna put more sales tax toward it this year than we did last year. Well, if sales tax is down, okay, well, we'll put more general funding toward it this year, but we know what what that number is.
And distribution of, right?
What's that?
Distribution of the funds, where?
Yeah.
Right, the ben, I mean.
Yeah, we can, we can pull it anywhere as an organization.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
The amount that goes off of the base office budget, so it's. It does make sense, makes, you see your contribution for us is X, Georgetown is X, we're saving the total budget, total approval budget.
And obviously, you see those numbers change with the population, just like Jonathan was saying.
Look at this right now, what you have is that Empire and Silver Plume are paying a little, less than one percent. Idaho Springs and Georgetown are paying about twenty-two percent, and then the, it's fifty-six percent is the county.
Right, sure.
You know, does that go, does that align with our population?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where it's based right now, but.
Maybe percentages like that, if people, if people weren't fussing too hard about that. That percentage, and then every three years, or unless then if something really extreme happens, you can revisit the percentages.
Figure county has eight thousand people, Idaho Springs is about eighteen hundred, Georgetown's about fifteen hundred. I think that's about, that's probably, yeah.
Second ever green, all that.
Oh, another.
But that's part of the county, like that's the unincorporated county.
Well, well, oh, yeah, yeah, of course, but equal in that eight or nine thousand.
I like, I, if you look at the percentages of that two hundred and twenty thousand budget that we plan on, we go percentage wise on that.
I will find a methodology like that, I think that's a good inclusion, but I can add something like that.
You know, this also gets a lot easier in a week or two if we find out about that grant.
Is that what?
I mean, I I'm just saying, I don't think. But equivalent.
Hey, hey, right.
If, if you were a Silver Plume or an Empire, if we're, we're indeed asking you to pony up like five hundred bucks. Uh, right now, we may have it in there at two thousand, but with the, with a, a grant, I mean. It, it could be very inconsequential.
It's a, it's a kind of, it's a CD P H E grant, and they can be variable, depending on the length of time they decide to sponsor it. So it depends if it's one year or three years.
You can build it in the IGA that says it allows for grant funding to offset the contribution percentages.
Right.
Especially if you have grant funding. Whatever is required beyond the grant funding available for that particular year gets broken down evenly by the same percentage as agreed upon. If what you don't want to do is renegotiate your IGA every like twenty four months, right, thank you.
Okay.
Because that's.
Why do you say that?
I don't know, it's weird.
I think what might be helpful to John though, it's like the exact percentage methodology that we're looking for, right? Tied to. I don't know, population, I, I don't, whatever you guys want, but, because. While these numbers can change, I do think it's, you know, provides more certainty, we just have the numbers in the agreement. Three years, you must relook at it, so it might be helpful to have a more.
Well, I'm just part of this meeting, but in the appointment of the board, it says one representative for each uh community. If one or two community puts most of the, or a lot bigger volume. And they have more population, should they have more members for the population?
Well, we talked about that, but ultimately, what's really important is that everybody's on the same table, and that's, that's the difficult part, it's because. Silver Plume and Empire just can't.
Yeah, you could get a two against one, or whatever, pretty easy.
That's gonna happen either way.
Well, yeah, but at least there's just one per.
Yeah.
So.
I would, I would, while I agree.
I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that's the way it should be, I'm just saying, would, would there be an issue?
Yeah, sure.
If one of the, you know, we were the ones.
Well, they're worried about us voting against.
Well, yeah, because.
Yeah, if we were.
They're not gonna have much of a vote if there's so much.
So I think, I think having one for each entity, I do like the idea of a member at large, it could be the school board, it could be Loveland, it could be somebody with wrapping companies. You know, maybe they each get a year, you know, where they get to just be an at-large member without voting for religious, I don't know.
So I have a suggestion, um, in very round numbers, about half the population of Clear Creek County. Yes, it does. So what about um fifty percent paid by Clear Creek County? Um. Twenty percent uh paid by Georgetown and Idaho Springs and then ten percent by the other two. Or maybe, uh, actually, maybe five percent by Silver Plume and.
Five of the Empire.
Five and then, you know, Empire and then.
That's mine.
Okay, something like that, maybe just to, maybe just to throw that out, just to get us a starting point for how, how the budget should be. Where, a talking point for how much it would look like.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty reasonable, although there's not a very big contribution for those smaller ones, I mean, I know it's big for them, for the smaller budgets, but I mean, it's just like that.
And then, will there be one appointed from Clear Creek County for the county? Yeah, is that gonna be outside of the municipality?
It had, well, yeah, definitely, because there's.
Because otherwise, you could show favorism.
Well, sure, and and you're talking about the population of, I mean, in, in Clear Creek, you're going Clear Park through Jeffco and. Almost Mark County line to, like, you know, well up in D F E in Brookport State.
Well, yeah, in all fairness, the, the county is bam, uh.
Fifty percent.
Well, they're, you're right.
So they deserve a seat at the table, because all the unincorporated non-municipality areas also need to have.
Yeah, to be fair, they're taking their money out of lodging tax, which is partially generated by Idaho Springs too, so. Give it back, right? The, the county would probably appoint a county commissioner, as their representative, like you guys.
Your assumption, that would be definitely, yeah.
I think that ultimately, what they're, what the goal here would be is to build this organization and have this person, is what you're looking for is like all-time quarterback on housing. Even disaster response and stuff like that, like this person could just have, you know, be the, the guru of housing in Clear Creek County. And be able to coordinate all the people, like if there's gonna be, like say somebody comes out of Springs, like I want to build this housing project, well, they could help. Make sure that they go to plan right and that they get all the details right, but we'd still, they'd still have to go to planning commission, still have to go to council and all that, so. Our board would just make sure that, you know, that's what our board member would do, is just advocate for Idaho Springs projects. Make sure that, you know, things are going right in the county and all that kind of stuff.
Is this also, and and also, then I want to ask you, um, would this also be something where we could ha- utilize, like with, with the lodge, when the lodge was condemned? You know, when we had to, the city chose to figure out what was gonna happen with those folks?
I think so.
You know, like this could be, somebody could also have that kind of resource available.
Yeah, I put that in there in the.
So some of that with disasters, that's what I mean, think of.
Right, and I think that that's what I was thinking too, is, or say, say God forbid there's a fire somewhere, you know, they could help make sure people have places, whatever, maybe coordinate FEMA to get. You know, emergency housing in here, or whatever the case may be, but this person would be, because right now, the way it happens is, is like a hodgepodge of people. Who try to give like an hour to the project or whatever, if that's a regional thing, or you know, whatever it is, but it just, there's no person who's like, kind of. Centering that work, and that's what we would need, and they could be the ones that are applying for some of these prop ones to three dollars and coordinating on the.
Taking some of that out of the municipality or the county.
Or we'd still be involved, but we'd just be, you know, it, it just takes some of the, the strain off the bus.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, uh, anything further? Would you like to move on to our next item, uh, long overdue, historic sites and facilities board? Glad to see it, I, I think uh, this is uh very well laid out. I'm glad we had a pretty good input, uh, you know, before this was constructed, what's, what's everybody think?
I have one, um, there is, I think I went too far, I was in parking, um. When it talks about emergency, emergency planning, I actually talked to you about this, emergency maintenance.
Emergency stabilization before, it'd be trying to.
I, I know, but I'm, I'm, hang on.
Okay.
Um, with emergency stabilization, one of the things that we noticed when we did our site tour, was that stabilization happened, which was important. But I would like to see, and there's no, there's no hierarchy about, oh god, we can't, we can't call a board, we can't do all the things. How do we manage emergency stabilization so that historic preservation isn't? How do we manage emergency stabilization so that historic preservation isn't a piece of how it is stabilized? Because some of the stabilization that we've seen, um, you know, with no shade to anybody, but it's been, let's just fix it. And from a historic preservation standpoint, that's also going to have to be addressed. So when you stabilize it, you can't just go, let me just hammer a nail and poke a screw in and not worry about, does that ruin the entire door? Does that make sense? And there was no, there was no breakdown about, um. How that happens, I know we initially talked about, like if it's a three person board, you just gotta get one member of the board, but I would like to see the city planner. You know, if this is something that the city, that, oh, God, something just broke, a roof just fell in, the city and can't get a hold of anybody on the board or quorum. Then the city planner works with public works or whoever's managing stabilization to make sure that we're still looking at historic present, we're not making the problem, a bigger problem when we go beyond emergency stabilization. So that makes sense? I know what I'm trying to say, I'm not sure I'm communicating.
Lisa, would you let us know, um, let everybody know what section, uh.
Yeah, hang on, let me get into the ordinance.
It's actually in the meeting packet.
Yeah, it's in the meeting packet, um.
Oh, regularly. Five thirty-two A to.
Yes, thank you.
Plan C.
No, I was like, it's not in the, it's not in the, uh.
It's actually, I think you're talking about more, uh, five thirty-six, emergency operation three, or.
Um, let's see, that's aligned. It is.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's before that, okay, I am in section, um, five thirty-two, Nick is right, it is section two, um. See, emergency stabilization work, in emergencies where, and it is on page three of that ordinance. Emergencies, emergency immediate action is required to safeguard a proper structural integrity or historical significance, such work may proceed without prior board review. Emergency work which shall be reported to the board is critical, I would like to see that they talk to the city planner, you know, so that there is at least an eye towards historic planning. Because sometimes when you stabilize things, then you have to go back and do even more work to maintain historic preservation. That doesn't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with just, anybody can make a decision. And there's no chain of like, how are we getting this done so that we're not making more work, or we're damaging historical assets?
I got you, I imagine the emergency stabilization is something, it's gonna be a bare minimum of effort, it's gonna be, uh, actually, you know, we'll point out there too. So we have a wall falling down on the, on the powerhouse, uh, the idea would be to essentially just prop them down there.
So.
Lock it with, keep that wall crossed.
You and I, we have a good rapport, but ten years down the road, who says that's gonna happen? I'm looking at, if it's like, I don't worry about this with the people. You know, what I'm worried about is this is an ordinance where you don't have like anybody, the mayor could decide.
Well, I, I know, but I'm, I'm just worried in an emergency on a, a Saturday night, you know, there, there may not be any way. To get Dylan or, or myself, or, I mean, it's an emergency, so I.
I'm like.
Look at, if they foul it up frankly, I'll have to redo it.
This makes me, this is the famous, as I said.
But in an emergency, you know, we, we don't have the luxury of, you know, being able to plan this out for, you know, the future fix. Yeah, I just, I, I don't know how we get around the, you know, this, this factor, especially.
So then who is the decision maker about how this happens?
It'll be whoever's doing the emergency stabilization, so I, I essentially it'd be whoever's, uh, in charge of public works at the time.
And, and like I'm saying, if, if they totally foul it up, then it'll, it'll have to be redone. You know, it might be expensive, but, uh, you know, we can still preserve the historic integrity of whatever, whatever's happening.
Could you just have language to it that says such work may proceed without prior board review and shall. Align to the.
Historic.
Historic standards to the maximum extent practical, and then like, is there no reason that we couldn't bring public works along to the trainings and stuff like that too, just to have?
Well, I'm not looking to bring anything to a historic level or, uh, historic accuracy, if I'm, if something's falling apart, say, uh. The, one of the bearings on the water wheel go out and the water wheel starts tipping, we're, we're basically just gonna run in there with straps and we're trying to stabilize the structure. To keep it from collapsing further, we're not trying to add anything to it. Uh, it may require some screws, it may require some, some additional lumber, but, uh, it should be to a point, something that could be removed or undone is where, where I'm at.
Yeah, but I think what Lisa's trying to say is that, yeah, it's important to make sure that whatever that is doesn't, not necessarily like you're trying to do it historic, but that it doesn't.
I, I think the greatest extent practical, yeah.
Can we add something about like me?
And all, and all, this is just an emergency situation, so you could, if the expertise is needed outside of city employees, they could bring it. Down the road, they could bring in a contractor to help them with this, it might not be all city employees.
I would just like to see some language that we put, you know, towards historic preservation, Mark.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's that much language about what specifically signifies what an emergency is. You know, maybe there's something there where you could talk to, you know, like if the water wheel is going to, something breaks, it's collapsing. I think that's a different situation than saying the wall is crumbling and needs repair very quickly, um. You know, in that first example, even if you didn't need specific historical perspectives, we're still saving the resource, otherwise it might be destroyed in the second example. Like we could probably don't need to do that work intentionally, so like clarify maybe what the emergen, what an emergency truly is. As, you know, like the cannon rusting, let's say, you know, it's like, well, instead of doing that, right, sure, well. Sure, let's say like, don't, like the doors collapse on, on, on the fire, uh.
Doors house.
Doors houses, like, we want to stabilize that, so the problem with whatever, but.
So two things come to mind on that, one is liability of anybody being around that could be hurt and it'd be liability to the city. The second thing would be the property being damaged to, to destroyed or to a certain value, it's going to be a large.
So that's why I think there needs to be, like, if there's an emergency, can we try to, we could put some language in here, we, we make an effort to contact like the city planner or. Somebody who is historic preservation ideas, in addition to, the other thing, and I will tell you, we've talked about this, uh. One of the things that we've talked about with sites and facilities is that each property will have a maintenance list, you know, here are the things we see, like, so there will be. Um, clearly, each property will have its own assessment, so there will be a, a starting point for each property about where it is, what's been done, what needs to be done. Like that's one of the things that, when we've talked about sites and facilities, what we would like to see. That they do, so that they're maintaining that yearly maintenance and where is, where these properties are, help wise.
That's what I'm reading. Yeah, maybe there, maybe as part of that, another safeguard might be to kind of have, like if we identify in that annual report. This is something that might have this need very soon, we can kind of put in place ahead of time, potential emergency.
Well, I'm working with public works too, cause they're gonna be the ones that get, you know, asked with feeling with this, okay, if this happens, here's the plan, relatively speaking, you know, I mean.
So then even if.
As long as nothing goes wrong.
Even if in the field, you know, it's like, oh, this thing's collapsing, we don't have time, it's Saturday afternoon, we can't be changed, but it's already kind of like, uh. That's management practice with that.
There's still gonna be limits, I mean, if something is coming down and it's a safety hazard, we're, we're staying, we're not standing away anyway. If there's something that's just unsolvable, we're, we're really talking. Whatever we're doing is gonna be a fair amount, just kind of prop it up or keep it up or, 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 uh, uh, keep it from worsening.
Yeah, there is some major reconstruction over the weekend, it's just.
Do you just literally write in on that, like, say, we're gonna take minimal measures to stabilize, I don't know, does something might make that?
If you just say in line with the guidelines, the maximum extent practical.
Practical, yeah.
Like then that puts that, that onus on public works to like, have that knowledge of the guidelines and make sure they, they try, even if they can't.
I think that's where the planner might come in, is that, um, if, if the planner is notified as soon as practical, um, as, as soon as it's, uh, practical. Why not have him include him in that notification and he can be a part of that process? That might be something, a fairly simple change that you add, uh, it's not preventing the work from being done in an emergency, but maybe having him moved in, that, is that a possibility?
As far as being oversight?
We, we'll, everybody, yeah. Public works, you know, they're not experts in, in historic preservation and I understand the concern, so, um, if, if someone has some knowledge in that area. But from a public perspective, historic preservation perspective, so I think moving him in, um, as, as soon as possible, I think that might. A good thing, just like notifying the board, and he, he's the staff, the main staff person to the H B R C or to the, uh, sites and facilities board.
Which would be great, but in an emergency, maybe you can't reach him or something.
I'm, I'm not saying it would prevent that work from being done, I'm just saying he would be good.
Yeah, as soon as practical. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, so you gotta have the warning.
Because that would be a resource.
You don't want him to stop.
That'd be a resource to public works, yeah.
Okay, uh, Jonathan, any further direction needed on this one?
No, uh, you have the first reading for this tonight, we still have the ability to edit this document a little bit.
I don't think we're all in agreement that we should, uh, have the additional wording of, uh, to match in the extent practical.
Under the city's historic guidelines?
Yeah.
And then would you also be adding the. Addition of contacting the city planner, emergency work shall be reported to the board and city planner as soon as practical.
I, I, I think that would be a, a good in, insurance, is everybody okay with that? All right.
Thank you.
Any, anything, uh, further? And I will move on to the parking plan update, uh, I really appreciate all the work that went in on this, uh, I thought it was a pretty good update.
Yeah, council, uh, um, we did need a staff, uh, several times to talk about updating the parking plan, we have Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, which is, um. Uh, it had some new downhill mountain bike trails opening in the near, uh, you know, in the, the summer, the next month or two. And, uh, we just want to be prepared from a, uh, parking management standpoint for, uh, more folks visiting the park. Uh, it's also a good idea to just update this plan periodically, but we do think, uh, we, we need to, typically the parking plan is dealt with the downtown area. But now as we get more popular and more interest in the, in, uh, visiting, uh, we think we need to expand our managed parking area to the west a little bit. For protecting residential parking and also to the east to, uh, better describe to people where they can and can't park. And also, uh, protect the residential area along Riverside Drive, cause we, we do think that's gonna be a challenge. Uh, what you have before you here in the packet is the, uh, existing parking plan, and then in red are the draft revisions that are proposed. And we're not, uh, not suggesting these be adopted tonight, but, uh, we wanted to make sure council had a chance to just look at this. See if there's anything else we should address, and then we'll bring it back in final form at our next meeting for city council consideration of adoption. Um, just scanning through, I want to highlight a couple of things, um. Most of the changes are towards the end, um, there's section. Uh, section nine, parking prohibited, uh, at all times of certain streets, one street, it may seem obvious that there shouldn't be parking on it, but. As pressures, uh, as there are more pressures to find parking in the east end, uh, we think we need to officially sign Riverside Drive, no parking between twenty-third and the town hall. There's, it's a narrow road.
Yes.
There's no shoulder, there's really virtually no place on the pavement that, that parking can be allowed, right now it's a two-way street. Barely, you know, two cars, standard sized cars can pass, so we just think, uh, that that section of Riverside should be posted officially, no parking. It doesn't mean that there can't be parking at the base of the Argo there, they're gonna be doing some improvements to. Put in some temporary, additional temporary parking in, in their area there, in the base of the Argo mine and mill. So, uh, what we're talking about on the city street, so that's one of the, one item, um, another is, uh, this is kind of a cleanup, section ten. Uh, we bought, we got some direction from council a little while back, we just need to formalize this to establish one hour parking in front of the library, that was a request of the library.
Yes.
And it is still, uh, posted three hour parking, so now we just want to make it official and give, uh, public workers that authority to go ahead and change those signs to one hour parking in front of the library. It's like three or four spots.
Is everybody okay with that? All right.
So I got a question about that too, I think currently from Center Alley to Colorado Boulevard is, is, uh, limited for Carlson parking, right?
No.
Is that?
It's all residential, right? There's, there's a part that's got, um, on the west side. Yeah, like, uh, ADA parking in there, but most of it's residential.
I thought that was geared towards Carlson.
Uh, yes, but I think it's been signed, um, we worked with the school to provide the staff there with permits to park in. Paid parking areas around the schools, we're in school hours. And so right now, the north side of Carlson on Colorado Boulevard and the east side, north of Center Alley, that's, uh, paid parking. So that, that would, that would continue on the west side of Fourteenth. On the east side, it's residential, because there is that one house there by Center Alley and then.
On the west side.
This would be on the west side, yeah.
But I thought it used to be something that you had because of Carlson being there, but Carlson's not going back in now.
Correct, they didn't have, we just, we just worked with them to allow staff to be able to park around the building, um, so, but it'll stay, uh, paid parking. The other area that, uh, we'd, uh, suggest to council, we might want to reduce from three hour to one hour is few spots on the.
Yeah.
Um. Right, so over here on the west side of.
Pay the water bill or something.
Exactly right, it's, it's, it's three hours a little longer than it needs to be, I think, and, uh, someone's here for a longer meeting that, uh, you know, they, they might have to pay or, or, or walk a little farther than that free parking. But we think for those folks that just want to stop in and, and pay their, as Mayor said, pay their water bill or just.
Buy their city license.
Buy their city, yeah, like, whatever it is, uh, we think designated these several spots over here, one hour would be better than three hour. So similar to the library, where people are just going in, visiting, you know, to get a book or to get a, pay their water bill and. Through that aspect, do you want to put something up that, uh, allows that a, a longer. Except for like weekends and holidays, that has an exception on there? That, that's a great idea, Paul, I, I, I would, I would say yes, I, I think kind of like we do with our staff parking over here, this. These spots, these six spots on the east side of city hall during the weekday are for staff parking, but on the weekend, they're, they're open to the public, paid parking. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Paul, for these city hall spots, yes, if we can, there's a way to market that way, yes, we can, we can get a sign made up that, that, right?
Well, I think this is gonna help with the library and the city, but potentially you still have out of counters that could just come and use those spots.
You do.
And they're gonna go, so you're not gonna eliminate that.
You're not gonna eliminate that. But if they're here to, you know, have a meal or.
So a person trying to do city business could potentially come here and those spots are full all the time.
I think it's more of a problem now, cause they are three hours, so people in the know will say, oh, I know where the free three hour parking spots are.
I want to hear three minutes.
Maybe we should make it a half hour, you know?
I think an hour, you know, is okay, like I think if people, if they're gonna stay here and they plan on, we had to eat, eating dinner, that's a lot more than an hour, like.
It is, but then you still, I, yeah.
No, they could be rolling the dice, you're right, they could just say, oh, let's have.
And that was the point that the library made, was that the three hour that's in front of the park.
You just have cars and people parked in there.
It's perfect, cause they can go have a leisurely meal, go in a shop, right?
Yeah.
It defeats the running into the library to, you know, exchange a book or something, you know, so.
Um, but like she said, roll the dice, because how often is parking meter guy gonna make his rounds to those spots?
Okay, so they've gotten really good, I don't know what's going on.
Take good care of you folks.
Um, I do, uh, I would like to, and I don't know where for this, I think with this, we need to have a sign on that street that says no trucks. On the east, the east side of Wall Street, that's something that I've heard from people there, and this is just my personal observation. With those parking lots that are up, Two Brothers, like I went up Virginia Canyon, Two Brothers for the V cam. Um, I'm, I was at the Borough Races, like that was my designated volunteer space. Um, I'm, I was at the Borough Races, like that was my designated volunteer space. And there were like six or seven trucks that went by really fast, I think we have two speed limits signs. You know, this is because they drove, they were driving forty up Virginia Canyon Road, and it was all the bikers, cuz and I only know that cuz the bikes were hanging out the back, there's no.
Who got that pickups?
Yeah, like, it's like big pickup trucks.
Walked up there once.
Yeah, so we just need to have, we need to have some speed limits signs, because forty miles an hour is too fast up that road. And I was like, oh my god, thank god they're not a borough, is. That would've, that would've been an ugly collision, just observation. And it's only gonna get worse as we have the parking up there. I think this may mean that we have to invest in some serious.
Definitely make an ass of somebody who's.
All right, uh, the staff, anything further direction?
Just a few more comments, um, uh, we have a new section, section thirteen, it's in red. Uh, that basically states for the most part what currently exists as far as paid parking on city streets. Uh, again, just wrapping this into our adopted parking plan. Uh, then section fourteen, uh, paid parking lots. Uh, again, what currently exists. Uh, in yellow, highlighted in yellow is a change that from what exists today, what we're, what staff is proposing. And what we're proposing here with the visitor center parking lot, it's been our observation that mostly the visitor center parking lot is underutilized. Uh, clearly, the uh, we wanna protect visitors to the visitor center. And allow them to park for free, have a, have a certain number of designated spots for, for the visitor center. But it does seem that most of the time, there are a lot of empty spaces there, and again, with. More pressures or finding parking, we think we need to formalize this as a city parking lot. And make sure that we have a certain number of sign, uh, spaces that are signed for visitor center only, no, at no cost, maybe one-hour spot, two-hour spot.
One hour.
One hour, and then uh, and then maybe the rest of the spaces would be open for public parking. So again, we would, we would talk further with the visitor center about this and the store society, but. We, we just think we, we probably need to start better managing that lot.
Well, and that on the south side of the visitor center, that is designated for the offices, nobody's using that space for the offices, even the people that print it. Um, there's a lot of people that just park there.
Yeah.
And environments.
All right, anything uh further?
Um, there's another section, new section, section fifteen, which deals with residential permit parking areas. Again, for the most part, this just states what currently exists. We are proposing that the residential uh permit area be expanded to the west with the, with the new uh housing project going in on Goldbigger Field. We've had some feedback from residents uh that they'd like to um be a part of the residential permit parking program. So this would extend it from, I think, tenth, uh, it goes to tenth now, so this would extend it over to eighth, so just a couple blocks. Uh, just sign it that it's residential permit parking only for those residential areas. And then uh to the east, as I already mentioned, uh, we do think there's gonna be pressure on the Riverside Drive residential area. Uh, once uh B-CAM uh gets more popular, so we wanna make it very clear that there's no, um. That is residential parking only in uh that section of Riverside, uh, and all that little section of Gilson. So, and I think uh, and then there's some maps, again, just wanted to, Dylan uh very quickly provided some uh visuals here. He's um, he's getting um GIS capabilities, so he'll be able to link even better maps, but to put these together, so we get some visuals. So if uh, if there's any other feedback, happy to take it, if not, I'll bring this back in final form for adoption at our meeting on the twenty.
Just a couple questions, who, who is uh, how, who's in? Who came about these ideas and the, is it you and Jonathan?
Uh, we met as staff, we had the police chief, uh, public works, John, me, um. So, so we met several times.
Because this is a lot of work.
We, we did, we did include also Interstate in one of our meetings to make sure, as our, as our contractor.
There's a lot to understand here, a lot to keep track of and how it's evolving and changing, it's a lot of work, so, good job on all that.
And I was glad there wasn't major changes.
Yes.
Yeah, we just, we went through. With this, to get this parking plan out.
Yeah.
I've never seen turnouts like that, so thankfully, these were pretty minimal changes.
The second question I have is Dylan's got these maps, but does the city website also have the parking map on there?
Thank you for bringing that up, um, we will get these maps on the website when they're, when they're finalized. And also uh our partners, the Colorado Mountain Bike Association, COMPA. Uh, they're gonna do their best through their channels and so, social media channels, um, and word of mouth. To, and also brochures, they have maps of the trails to, to get the word out that way as well about. They actually have a section in the, in the maps, the trail maps about where, where you can park, where you should not park.
Do you have like a QR code that either goes to our website or Interstate or somebody that says, and let's make this, it's fairly easy, I think it's easy, but. I hear from a lot of people that they struggle, here's where you can park, you're a resident, here's where you can park for free. If you are, you know, an employee, here's where you park, you are a visitor, here's where you park. You know, like that, that is where I keep hearing challenges, and now that we're changing it, cause I agree with Scott, this was a lot of work, so thank you.
You know, you're right, there, there, that's a good point, I think we probably should publicize, there are places to park for free.
Oh god, yes, please.
If, if you're willing to walk a little bit, and now we have sidewalks, great sidewalks, and it's a very walkable city. Uh, give you a couple examples, Sutter Creek Road, there's quite a few spaces up there that are free. Uh, that's very close to downtown, a couple blocks, uh, Colorado Boulevard, east, generally east of um. Uh, Third Creek, that's all, all free parking.
And Fire Department, your east of Fire Department, you got Colorado Boulevard, that's actually a real easy walk.
Yeah.
I just think we need to, really, like, we need to make this big and public and color-coded, so it's very clear. The red is for, you know, if you're in red, you must be paid, if you're in green, you, cuz you live, you know, I mean, like.
Yeah.
And we don't advertise the residential past the residential area, because I saw. It's like five blocks right now, or however far, we're talking about extending that another block?
Another two blocks.
Because I saw a couple of other cars, and they're walking to, they're walking to downtown, they don't care, they're gonna get free parking. So that extending the residential is a good idea, but we don't advertise that's free on that end of town.
No, we don't.
All to that, but, but now Colorado Boulevard and Sutter Creek are two blocks away, they're quite a bit apart.
The residents.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's not quite as bad as you go past eighth and go west, like there's space for a visitor to come in and park generally. Along both sides of Colorado. But like where I lived on Wall Street, you had your parking spot, and that is where you parked, and if you move, foot either way, you're in trouble. And that's not quite the case as you go further west on, on Colorado. Here is your space.
Gets a lot better down there.
So I feel like this parking has, the paid parking has. Gotten us better numbers of tourists to be able to come in this town and have a parking spot. It's still a big challenge, and I feel like we're still losing people that don't have places to park. Still faced with that challenge.
Yeah.
All right, uh, anything further on this uh parking study? All right, I'd like to move on to the Idaho Springs Cemetery sign. Uh, thank you, Paul, for uh putting in some legwork on this.
It's not a battle, this uh, the cemetery sign was hit about a week ago.
I saw your report, it wasn't the first time, so it, it's uh, it's had some battle scars on it.
It most certainly has over the years.
That had its fort.
I'm sorry?
Huge fort.
No, I missed that sign, that's right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yellow one, it's much bigger than ours.
Is it the one that is in the garage?
That's what we have right now.
That's currently what we got up there, oh, well, it's no longer up, it's still.
No, but that's what, that's what I like.
That's what the foot break.
Sign?
On the wall.
Semi, using for turnaround, that's gonna be a very, very broken.
Somebody was turning around.
Yes, it was uh, it was a little away, equipment.
Big drug. Gotcha.
In voice.
Anyway, the, the options are, we can keep the original sign with a little bit of work, uh. Simply spruce it up and put it back up, uh, we'll have to scale up the bottom corners because of some damage to it. And we can't lapse the same radius from the tops, so just. It was there when I was in high school, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Maybe.
So is it fifty, my question is, is it fifty years old?
I would give it fifty.
Absolutely, easy. You don't think?
Yeah, fifty, that's, you're pushing into the like, we need to look at it from a historic.
Well, cemetery is a site facility too anyway, so.
Uh, yeah.
Problem is, I actually like the water wheels. I do like the water wheels.
You could, you could still go through the same process and replace that sign with something like that though, but it is one of the site facilities.
So this has to go to sites and facilities now?
Well, that's, I, I would say.
Changes, right?
I would say we give Lou Howard the courtesy of making her.
I uh, I did give her, I did give her a call, she hasn't contacted me back, but absolutely, I'll go with this.
The Lou.
Right, well, for fixing it? Oh, yeah.
How am I eat?
Well, if we have to fix it, and this is the original sign, that that's what we should need, um, if it's not fixable. The, the general historic thing is white, but different enough that you can tell it wasn't originally. Simult, but not originally.
Do any of these stand out?
I actually like the original sign, but I, I really like the water wheels.
Yeah, you know what's fun, I like the water wheels.
I don't know what that, I just, that's appealing to me.
It's cool. I would say original is more context, like within the last sixty years, the sign was put up, so not original to the cemetery, it's original to something within. Last sixty years, what else is in there?
I would say that we fix it, and Lou thinks that's a good idea, since this is kind of her, her baby.
It is.
Um, if it is not fixable, I would vote for the water.
It's only been hit, what, probably ten, twelve times, certainly, when we go on, so.
We'll be reinforcing that uh, that traffic, that circle with uh some of the larger objects, so we'll put some uh physical barrier there.
Oh, good.
Ballads up there.
My question, are we just replace the sign, do we think we piece it together, we piece it together, we piece it together? And we're fortunate that we have a sign that we can maybe kind of piece together again this time, but this is a recurring thing to.
This painting ballads are same color, twenty grand.
Are we sure to replace the sign?
I think it's a good place to be here, as, as far as a sign replacement, but the wood is a little old. We'll, we'll probably get another twenty, thirty years out of it, there's no reason why you couldn't, um, but uh. It is, it has weathered and has taken a beating over the years. Uh, as far as cost goes, it costs us about half again as much to just build a new sign then replace. Then uh, just repair the old one.
I like the idea that you said you're gonna put some locks up to discourage people from using that as a turnaround?
Well, we'll still be able to use it as a turnaround, they just won't.
Talk about cost of sign.
Okay.
They'll hit some rocks, they'll already have a sign.
You know what, you, you make the turn, you take your chances.
That's right.
I'd definitely put some ballads up, and then make half of a wagon wheel covers those on the other side of the sign.
If we're gonna replace it, I would vote the water.
And this, I'm just throwing out design elements here.
Oh, no, I just, I like this one, I think that's a good call.
That took me a long time to get the water.
Jeremy?
I'd say replacing, I don't know, I think water wheels are great.
I, I like the water wheel.
I noticed one of these has a date on it, I mean, it'd be a good idea.
But I did mention that in the report, that that is an element that I uh, I truly intend on adding to the sign, no matter what we do, which direction we go.
Like the oldest grave site, or how do you do that?
Uh, when the, I guess it would be the year that the, the cemetery got moved up there, I don't know exactly. I don't know what exactly what year that was, but um, the other option would be to put the established dates when the original cemetery was, was uh started. Yeah, cuz those graves were, they were moved.
Yes, you actually have people that go around towns that wanna go visit a graveyard.
Yeah.
Because Lou's working on putting everything on fine grave, um, maybe the original.
Uh, Janita, I was just gonna ask for your thoughts on this.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have any strong opinions for it really.
Now, if we go with a replacement, you, did you say you liked the water? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Scott? All right, all right.
I like it, yeah.
Very good, Paul, all right, I will definitely get with Lou, uh. You will uh, if she steers more towards the original sign, wanna keep the original sign, but she's in favor of something different and likes the water wheel as well.
With the date, the original.
Whichever sign we put up, we'll put an established date on this.
I like that.
All right, very good. Uh, anything further? I'd like to move on to the uh parking lot baby project uh with the senior senator. Um, and I also would like to point out that, you know, sometimes we need to uh. Uh, just stop and smell the roses, what I mean by that is. Rightfully, we concern ourselves with like affordable housing projects. And how deep are we gonna get involved with management and, you know, being landlords and things like that? And I'm, I'm not getting off topic, I'm just saying, we have a tremendous success here with our affordable senior. And uh, the uh project support. Uh, has done an excellent job where seniors are on a sliding scale, so there's housing for folks. And I am just saying that this absolutely is an area where if they weren't there. It would be a much, a much more of a difficult situation uh with our seniors getting fed, getting housed. And that's why from time to time, we have helped historically, you remember? A year, about a year ago, uh, we contributed to building restoration. And that was uh fifteen thousand dollars, uh, they normally don't come to us uh very often. Uh, but this is one, Paul uh gave a, a, got a quote uh from a fast patch for us. About ninety-eight hundred dollars on this uh parking lot, and it is uh up for. A, a consideration at our, a regular meeting, but I, I would like to know what, how everybody feels about this. Uh, Jimmy, I'll, I'll start with you.
Yeah.
Okay, Jane? Lisa?
Have you seen that parking lot? I mean, that parking lot is a disaster, it needs to be resurfaced, so yes.
The cool thing just to add to this is, they've got a donor that's willing, willing to pay, pay the cost. But we can link a project support, they aren't putting ninety-six hundred for the parking lot, there's a hundred projects lined up that they could, they could spend that donated money against. So there's a double benefit by, by them not paying to pave the parking lot. They can take that donation, put it towards all the other current stuff, trying to get done with enough facilities, fourteen units.
Yeah.
So there's a, the benefit goes way beyond the parking lot.
And, and I, I should also add, uh, there's a bit of a timing issue here. Uh, because a fast patch was gonna be up here doing some other uh items, is, is, that is the case, right, Paul?
That is the case.
So, so there is.
Discount.
There, there is an additional mobilization, getting everybody in, putting up here to do that.
And a discount, cuz we're here.
Paul did a really good job of coordinating with their needs, with the projects to make the cost go down.
And Paul gets free driving too, so that's cool, right?
You know? That's what we need in, in a bad way, and it's.
Yeah, uh, agreed.
A very good use of our time.
Scott, your thoughts?
And that seems cheap anyway, to me.
Well, not parking lots.
Well, ninety-six hundred bucks, I mean, how many, how many square feet is that, Paul?
Forty-seven by.
It's fifty-one by forty-seven.
Yeah, so twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-five hundred square feet, that's.
Two feet of, two inches of asphalt.
Of asphalt.
Pretty, pretty economical.
Big time.
Right, anything uh further before I bring up our last item? All right, uh, Dylan, I think uh you're gonna help us up, Paul, thank you very much.
Sure, sure. There was one more thing that uh you were reminding me of before this meeting, and I can't remember what it was right now. I got sidetracked myself, um, that's, that's during your report, the regular meeting, fair enough, okay, yeah.
And Dylan, come on up and thank you for your work with the historic guideline uh update.
Sure, and I recognize there's very little time, so.
And, and you know what, I, I would inject, this is going to be a relatively short regular council meeting. So I, I'm just saying, should we go ten or fifteen minutes over, I, it's not getting more.
So, um, HPRC has been doing a lot of work on, as a certified local government, on historic preservation. And they've had quite a lot of interesting projects since I've arrived here, but for several years prior, that have. Uh, uncovered some of the maybe uh missing pieces of our regulations that maybe don't fully, um. Yeah, that achieve the intent and goals that the city has had in place, and that some of that's unavoidable. Because we haven't really updated these regulations since two thousand and seven, um, and some of that is just that there's been a lot of. Um, and some of that is just that there's been a lot of evolution in how the city has been developing and how guidelines elsewhere have developed with the National Park Service and the state historical preservation offices. Um, and so HPRC and staff have come together to say, wanna update these. Uh, I put in the report, there's, I kind of identified five different ways that, um, updates might be helpful. These aren't all updates toward actual guidelines, some of them are helpful how-to guides sort of thing that we could put on a website that someone who is a homeowner and doesn't actually have a listed building could come and say, oh, I need to replace my windows, how do I do so? You know, and we could have examples that show this is the preferred way to do it. Same with our downtown areas, same with any, uh, building within our historic property lists, um. So that would be kind of the new thing. A lot of the other ones is just building on what we already have, clarifying things, closing loopholes and, um, really ensuring that documents that we are, um, working with or our historic resources are, uh, strong and meet the intended goals. So what I'm proposing, or of the regulations articles, um, so what I'm proposing is kind of potentially two parts, maybe just one part, uh, kind of doing minor changes to the guidelines, working on how to guides, working on, uh, making it more user friendly for someone who maybe isn't an expert, uh, to come in and have a really positive experience with the city and with HPRC. Uh, could all be done relatively quickly. I think the goal of HPRC would be to do it this year. Uh, but then on top of that, we, you know, there's still big plans in place to do comprehensive plan updates. And part of that will certainly should include more of the historic element than what's there now. And that can get a lot of community input as well. And so that might be a good way to leverage that opportunity to also benefit these, our regulations broadly, um. And so given all of that, um, wanted to come here first to give some direction from council, see how, um, what priorities maybe should be considered, whether, uh, there's anything that maybe we haven't thought of that, that might be could progress and just to keep you updated on what, uh, HPRC is likely to be doing over the next few months.
All right, uh, Jimmy, any thoughts?
None.
Okay, Janine? Lisa, uh, I just felt that particularly since you've been on HPRC, you, you have quite a bit of insight here.
Yes, um, this has actually been a project that we have been concerned about probably the last six months. If you guys took a look at the design guide, cattle, guideline categories compared to other cities, one of our members put that together. And so it shows you the areas where we're very strong as far as how we look at design guidelines and then areas where we are lacking. And what we have found is that we have wording that's as simple as, well, you should do such and such, rather than you shall. And so what we're finding is that as people are coming into our historic district, when they are purchasing, maybe they don't have the same love for historic buildings, or they have plans that don't necessarily align. We feel like our design guidelines need to be a little, our, our guardrails need to be a little higher, a little tighter, because there are loopholes. And so, uh, our next HPRC meeting this month, we are all coming together with our suggestions for the, like the showers to the, the showers and the ought tos to the will. Um, but also if you look, like, we don't have anything about settlement patterns or appropriateness abuse. Um, Central City did that in twenty twenty-two, and that is something that we feel, and we're seeing that actually. We have a project that came before us that was inappropriate, was a question about appropriateness abuse. And I, I just think is we're getting more folks that maybe didn't live here or didn't come here because they love the historic, but it's a business decision. We need to have things that protect our historic district. There's only forty-six buildings. That's it, so.
All right. Um, Jeremy, uh, any thoughts on this one?
I think it's good, I'm gonna say, make sure, when you do this, make sure you allow for some of the new mitigation, hardening of structures and stuff. I think it's missed in Georgetown. I appreciate their desire, I'll say it. Georgetown has a very good set of regulations, but the running joke, which is really more reality is there's a puddle in front of your house, a broken wagon wheel, and you can simulate it every day. And that's, that's really restrictive to a certain degree, as we're starting to figure out how we mitigate short properties and make sure they don't burn down, structure, structure ignition or other events within their regulations. Just kind of take a look at that. As you draft your regulations, make sure it allows for those safety improvements that exist under fifty years.
That's a good point.
We need to make sure we lose downtown district, structure, structure or something, or something else. Cuz as you go through this stuff in Georgetown, we're working through what we can and can't do right now, or is this?
I think they're a lot more restrictive. I think, this is just my impression, you have to tend to be thinking, I think that we tend to be, we have some flexibility with, where we allow, you know, we look at what's gonna be onerous to the building owner. We don't want you to have to pay ninety dollars, but that's, I don't think that's appropriate. Um, and we do have a piece of the guidelines in place that say we cannot impose onerous conditions, and I think we try to respect that.
Yeah, I, I would agree. This third story thing from Georgetown, the history behind it, they had a collapsing storefront on their storefront storefront, that's what definitely is back there. Just to give you some context, it's a good, the regulations, why they did what they did.
I think our third story is more, we would reflect, not see a third story, one block outside of the historic district. It's a line of sight, like, ours doesn't have anything to do with the collapsing third story.
They don't allow third stories in the downtown district, um, street storefronts, because they did have it. But one that was in addition, it's built sixteen or seventeen, it's a collapsing storefront, it's smaller, it could have been in there. Regulations, that, that never happened.
Well, the thing is, we have got to tighten things up because everybody comes before us and says, but Bojo's did it. Bojo's did, I was like, that was before the historic, that was before HPRC.
Yeah, part of this maybe, it's, it's, I mean, it's two thousand and seven, people can easily say, well, people have been updating so long. How do I know that this hasn't been done since then? And we're pointing at regulations from twenty twenty-four, say, it doesn't matter what happened ten years ago or fifteen years ago, this is, you know, we did a review, we clearly updated this recently and these are the priorities moving forward in what you have, the breach. It's worth the effort, it's put your potential position.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Scott, what thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with Jeremy. I don't think you wanna restrict things that make common sense to today, but keep the historical aspect in that. Lisa made a comment, it's okay, you know, we see things, but you get bored down the road. So whatever you put in writing is going to be law or rules. So make sure that those are well thought out in process.
I think the safety is important because we've had that conversation with some of the projects that we've seen, where I really care about safety. How's it gonna affect the neighbors? Not, not just the building, but how does it affect the neighbors?
Right, yeah.
Fire, they have, um, fire suppression systems, they have fire lines at now, so I know, uh, uh, Kirk Exciter, they have fire suppression fire, uh, across the street, uh, each place, they have fire suppression, a good fire line, and a few others.
Got more alarms in Idaho Springs than it's very good, you can use anywhere else.
Well, that's because if something happens, it can spread like that.
Georgetown is, is very, Georgetown is very unspring, we're done alarm that are down at, at, Idaho Springs, the Droid Building, nothing's hard spring, they are alarmed. Bojo's is a pretty example, that all those buildings are connected, they're all, is one system.
Maybe it's part of the safety, we, because it's the exterior, we look at to, how does it affect your neighbors a little more than what we have in the guidelines? Because it's not a huge thing, but because most of those buildings share walls.
Right.
Maybe we expand and expand that language a little bit.
Especially when it comes to new additions, for example, you know, if you're just replacing windows, obviously that's a very important part of historic preservation as well, but probably isn't going to impact your neighbors in a way the same way. But so, you know, it seems like there's more potential for large projects coming down the pipeline, and so,
Yes.
um, getting ahead of that now while also allowing existing buildings to be reinforced and, um, install those modern safety mechanisms is important.
Dylan, do you need any, uh, any further direction?
No, that is, that is great, um.
Okay, was there any, uh, further, uh, uh, thoughts on this before we adjourn for about five minutes to a regular meeting? All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. It's seven oh seven, so we didn't do some minutes. We'll see in about five minutes.
No, but I.
There's a lot of.
Okay. That's awesome. Well, we, we don't know. But first of all, we've been, I've been patiently waiting to listen to this. So we can just make that part of the house. So our bit, we'll line up to go through and, and like make it happen and shift it all the way. Uh, it's like, even part, you can go to the fireworks, you can firewood. Uh, you can smash, probably you can shift. Because, uh, yeah. It gives you a shift order, it's a little important. And they might, or they don't say. That's worse. Probably.
Oh.
Obviously, that's happening. Couldn't hurt her. I'm excited. You know, I, yeah. They're on until, like, November.
Eight doors.
Like, we're thinking of.
We're doing, uh, six, six, seven, eight.
You must seem very. Yeah. Um, because the. Sark, I'm gonna say, I'm really young, so like, this is our celebration stuff? And it's like one. That was part of the reason. So we do.
Yeah, I don't follow that.
Once he does that. We, we're all are good on that. And this lucky firewood is even, you know, you get all the fire reviews are the same thing. We ran out again this year. Yeah, they feel like they, they get a pass here. We deliver our policy, we follow the operations. So we just start, so we have, we just want to make sure.
The roof is like, um, yeah.
That's a pretty vast, for a smaller, for a smaller place, that would be. Well, it's, it's just kind of a little complexity, they're in fact, uh, this is, this is impressive. It's just.
No, no, that's, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's what, that's.
Looking for two years. There doesn't need to go some security, I, I don't, this year, I ran out, I'm, I'm looking.
No, you have to. I know she's really worried, I was like, you go, but if that's.
But this is something.
It's entertaining.
I got, but I'm working, I got. Well, if I now.
So.
Pretty vile.
See, I have a great. I can see who's. I can just not. You know, it's. Yeah, it's fair. There's.
It's a simple picture.
It's more disturbing for you. So. That was the first time I went out of load for four hours. I didn't work for now, so it's hard. Why, when I brought.
I know, that was.
I want search.
I was gone, you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you, bro?
Hard. See, you're a little hurt in my eye.
Oh, really?
God.
Wow, you're. So. He would have now. Yeah. Traveling around.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, not that I'm. Oh.
Oh, yes.
It's like a five year.
And I'm like, it doesn't.
It's very, it's very, yeah. They're, they're.
Yeah.
That guy. All their.
No.
It is. God, it's been there. So, yeah, he's got it called up.
Yeah, he was working.
Actually, pretty good. After the. Plan.
Good now.
That's.
Yeah.
It's just. But this one.
My laptop, guys.
See, you know what? This safer cookie copy never got.
Eric.
What they say. With the. Yeah, it's like that.
Dylan, it's a no rush, but, uh, does it, you know, we're gonna be, I roll it. Oh, all right. Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, regular session for city council, city of Idaho Springs, uh, called order seven thirteen. And, uh, I'd like to start us out with a roll call, please.
Kate Collier. Lisa Manipool.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariotti. Yeah. Mayor Proton, Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harman.
Here. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise from the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We have an agenda before us tonight. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda for the June tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second from Janine, and, uh, any, uh, any comments on the agenda? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, six five, by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Uh, does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest?
Did you, I, I apologize, I was getting my computer fired up. Did you just do the agenda?
Yes.
I'll be here that one change to the agenda.
Oh, thank you. Well, uh, we, under the city administrator, would like to add the, uh, extension of the parking agreement. And it should be at everybody's seating position, uh, the addendum to extend it. And, uh, with that in mind, uh, let me, uh, let me save this here. I'd, uh, like to entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
I will make the motion again.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Thank you, Janine. Uh, any, uh, further discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand, the sigma five, by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Um, does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest?
I do. For a lot of bills.
And Jimmy, I, I did see that, uh, is there anyone else? All right, uh, I'd like to move to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes for May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. And, uh, any further discussion of the amendments? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and six five by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Um, I, uh, am gonna make the motion on approval of bills. We'll do this in, uh, uh, two stages. Uh, the first one, uh, uh, Jamie will be able to vote on. And this, uh, I will be moving to approve the bills to June tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, with the exception of allied towing. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. And, uh, any discussion of the bills? Uh, hearing none, now roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Janine Mariotti.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck.
Yes.
I mean, it's a little now.
And you do get to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Clark.
Go up, yes.
All right, and, and now for the second part, uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve the bills, uh, to June tenth, twenty twenty. All right. And now for the second part, uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve the bills uh, to June tenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, that includes allied towing. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, do you have any public comment uh, this evening, either on the sign up sheet or online?
Not online.
Okay. I don't. Yeah, I don't think.
Done here.
All right. Thank you for checking, Eddie. We don't have anything from uh, the liquor licensing authority or a finance officer tonight, uh, so we will move right into ordinance first readings, uh, starting with ordinance number thirteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty four, concerns adding a new article. Sure, of chapter five of the Idaho Springs Municipal Community Historic Sites and Facilities Board. Do we need to say with the the addendum? Since we talked about that in the morning session?
Um, that hasn't been done yet.
Not yet.
So that'll be the second reading.
Where you're talking about the.
Just the addition of language.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could do it now and come back for second reading.
It wouldn't be included in the secondary.
Then.
Yeah, be included in second.
I'll just send it historic sites and facilities board.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, second from Jeremy.
Are you doing the amendments or not?
Oh, well, we'll do it on second. And uh, any uh, any further discussion on ordinance number thirteen? Our hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, that was it for first readings. Uh, we do have a second reading, starting with ordinance, uh, number twelve. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twelve, series two thousand twenty four, and ordinance accepting and re-recognizing the alignment of nine hundred block and Minor Street.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? A second from Jeanine. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please, Mayor.
We do have a brief report from the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, go go ahead. Uh, Dylan, I'm sorry. I I wasn't sure why you were walking up there. Something else coming up.
Problem just sharing for. Watching all that.
And uh, thank you for the the map and stuff in our report.
Right. And so what was placed on the table uh, was a note added on just the last couple of days that clarifies the purpose of the exhibit, which is to illustrate and accept the northern boundary of Minor Street by its way as shown. So essentially, the original city flat for the city back from eighteen eighty one shows the right of way in this portion of Minor Street a certain way. Um, around the actual Minor Street, it's very slightly different, and this ordinance would seek to accept, identify that discrepancy so that moving forward, we can maintain and upgrade the road as needed. The alignments in some places differ between up to three to six feet, but uh, there's no change to any um, improvements as far as um, adjacent properties or anything to that respect, uh, more retaining laws and the like. Uh, so the benefit to this will be to allow sidewalk improvements and other road improvements associated with Minor Street that were approved as part of the Four Points Project and the maintenance and um, improvements going forward. So, separate.
All right. Uh, any questions for Dylan?
And planning commission did review it and were unanimously unanimously impaired.
All right. Well, thank you, Dylan. I appreciate that. Uh, any further discussion? Our hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Manifol. Yes. Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes. Yes. All right. Uh, next up is city attorney Nick. Always nice to have you, and uh, thanks for being with us tonight. Uh, did you have anything to share with council?
I actually do have a small thing. Uh, as council is probably aware, uh, very sad news, Commissioner Don Reimer from Planning Commission passed away. Just right. Last week. And uh, we we now have a vacancy on the planning commission. Um, kind of, so not kind of, it is up to you guys of how you want to handle that vacancy and get it filled. But it may be something you want to consider uh, taking action on here pretty soon. I can tell you that the July planning commission meeting has been canceled. So this is something where you have a bit of time to maybe even get uh, Don's replacement in there uh, by the next regular meeting in August.
He's sure going. I ain't.
He did. How long is his term? How long is up to his term?
That I do not know.
He was just appointed this year.
So it's still a four year. It's a four year term.
Who? Yeah, whoever is would take over that term.
He was the chair.
No. That isn't isn't Cindy still the chair?
Cindy is the chair and uh, Uchi is the vice chair, so if there is any new chair election that gets to take place.
Right.
We have alternates?
We do have two alternates right now.
Would one of them go into?
It's up to you guys. Yes, you you certainly can choose an alternate, and then you'd have to fill the new alternate.
Yeah.
But you're under no obligation to appoint an alternate to the vacant spot if you don't want to.
Would you be able to ask the alternates if they want to submit for like apply for that?
Yep.
Cool.
We have to do an open meeting or is it?
Yeah, the appointment, you know, you have to move to appoint someone.
The discussion on how we do it, though. Is that an open meeting?
I think so, yeah.
Maybe the last time we did a work session. You know, work session, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we ask, can we reach out to the alternates or have staff reach out to the alternates and ask them if they're interested?
I think they are. I mean, I I believe they both. Dylan was there. He can correct you, but I believe both of them indicated some interest last Wednesday.
Yeah, I had told them that uh, if they were interested, they uh, should let me know and provide like a letter of interest or something to that effect. Uh, we haven't gotten that yet, but it's only been a few days, so I think if I could reach out to to both of them individually and say, if you are interested, submit it in time, maybe for the next meeting or something to that effect, if if council said, maybe that was their preferred way to start, and if they both said were not interested, then I guess whatever the alternate method of filling that role might be would be the only need for direction.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Nick, you didn't have anything further for us?
That was it, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I just suggest us to add on to what was said that uh, we take this opportunity to go ahead and advertise other board vacancies that we have. Um, set a deadline with an eye towards getting this position by the first uh, Wednesday in in August when the next planning commission will be held. Uh, so and of course, we'll make sure that um, the two alternates uh, planning commission know right the deadline and and how to how to submit a letter, and we'll have a work session where we can can consider who submitted for the various positions to then be appointed.
All right. Sounds like a real good plan. Thank you.
May I ask a question? What other um, positions are available?
We don't have wonder here. Um.
I know we have one on each person.
We're gonna have a. HRC needs an alternate, I think, right?
No, we actually need a fifth member and an alternate.
Okay. So HRC and then sites and facilities is going to need membership.
That's right. You know, we could uh, preemptively anticipate an approval of a second reading and we could start soliciting interest for this board.
That's a good idea.
We need a variance board member as well. We always need variance.
All right. All right. Well, thank you. That sounds like a work with one when she's back on Monday. We'll. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, next up, we have city administrator. Uh, there's actually two uh, requests for action. And uh, I would like to make the motion on the first one, and this is a motion to approve an addendum to the agreement for parking management services with Interstate Parking Company of Colorado to amend the specified termination date from June first, twenty twenty four to October thirty first, twenty twenty four. And uh, do I have a second? Second from Jeremy. Uh, discussion? I would just like to add that this gives the city some flexibility regardless of what we choose to do. We 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 don't feel uh, you know, like it's there's a mad race here or something. It it gives us to a much slower time, if you will. Uh, anything?
Is the is the goal to at in October to like either redo the agreement with them or the contract with them or figure out where we're heading?
Well, this will be up to council. I mean, because we could uh, do this a few different ways, you know, putting it out, a request for proposal. Uh, I would say nothing is off the table up to and including bringing in an house, but this gives us uh, some time, you know, to talk about it. Right now, I mean, nobody felt that was a good idea to go uh, with an expired contract, hence uh, you know, we'll we'll extend it out.
Summer.
Yep. Yeah, exactly. Uh, anything further?
If we do decide to go in house, I think there's gonna be a matter of planning involved.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I I agree with you, Scott. All right. Uh, there is nothing further. Roll call, please.
Lisa Manifol. Yes. Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And then uh, the second item uh, for the fifty five thousand dollars to Haynes Architects, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve a contract agreement from Haynes Architects in the amount of fifty five thousand two hundred dollars for the preparation of construction documents for the interior reconfiguration improvements to Seville.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, sorry, Jimmy, did you second? All right. Uh, second for Jimmy. And uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, uh, before we leave city administrator, any just want to check in, make sure you didn't have anything further?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. And uh, moving on to Jonathan. Jonathan, it's uh, probably not real fair to put you on the spot coming back from vacation. That's good to have you back, and I just want to make sure uh, you didn't have anything further to share?
Uh, not seeing.
Okay. Uh, moving to our planner Dylan. Uh, anything further tonight?
Nope, nothing.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, and um, let's see. Chief. Uh, yeah, let's go to uh, let's go to chief. Uh, no request for action. Want to make sure you didn't have anything further?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Uh, I I would just like to add uh, for uh, everyone, first up, we do have the Lyle Waller's uh, law enforcement award that that will be going on uh, this Wednesday at four P M. At the high school, and everyone is invited if it's something that you would like to attend. Um, all right. Well, thank you, chief. Um, Public Works. Paul, we've got a few items here. And uh, we'll start with this first one for the thirteen thousand two hundred. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve an estimate of work by AFAST Patch in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars for the utility patching on Center Alley, Seventeenth Avenue and Fourteenth Avenue, account number twenty three dash zero zero dash six zero one six. This expense will be reimbursed by the Great Plains Communications that performed the utility work.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second for Jeanine. And any discussion? Um, all right. Roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And Paul, I want to say thank you for your work on this. Uh, the second item is also uh, for AFAST Patch for seventy six seventy five. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve an estimate of work by AFAST Patch in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars for seen and cracked sealed maintenance on Colorado Boulevard from the roundabout to Stanley Road, account number twenty dash zero zero dash six zero one six.
Thank you, Jeanine. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Jeremy. And uh, any discussion?
Will that require flagging in that?
It will. It will be a moving roadblock.
Yes.
All right. Anything further? A roll call, please.
Lisa Manifol. Yes. Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, the last item we have uh, is for the project senior uh, overlay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve an estimate by of work by AFAST Patch in the amount of ninety eight hundred and five dollars for an FAS for overlay parking lot, projects with senior center, count number two one dash three zero dash six zero one six.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, that second from Lisa. Thank you. Um, any uh, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Mary. Yes. Scott Penel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Jeanine Mariotti. Yes. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, Paul, thanks for getting all that together. Uh, did you have anything further for us tonight?
I do. The uh, library has a pretty significant leak that's infiltrating the building itself. Uh, it's coming on the backside and where the the chimney is. And where there's potential that the the vandals that went up there and uh, tagged the chimney could damage something up there.
I remember that.
We're unsure what's leaking, uh, where the water's infiltrating at, so I have a couple of assessments coming, one uh, Canyon Glass, and another from uh, Academy Roofing Inc. Uh, and they're a historical company, so they're doing some of the work here at City Hall, and are familiar with historic buildings. Uh, and which was a reason why I wanted to bring them in there because there's some facets to that uh, that facade that uh, may not be seen by other roofers.
Isn't, didn't you maybe also tell me that the um, gutter is historic?
I'm most certain it is.
Yeah, like it's it's not a it's not regular Home Depot gutter.
No, no. Uh, depending on what those, if it's uh, if it's something that, you know, is simply moving something up, we're just gonna go ahead and move that thing. Uh, but if we need to tear into this, if there's something more extensive that needs to be noticed, we'll have to come back.
All right.
Hey, one question for you, Paul. Is the new uh, summer hire, do they do weed control too?
My summer hire did not show up this morning.
Oh.
Uh, teenagers being teenagers.
All right. All right. Well, Paul, thank you uh, for uh, the heads up on the library and and the update on our our season of employee. Uh, anything further?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, Ed, got your uh, your staff or your staff report and uh, saw you blowing your nose earlier. I hope you're feeling all right.
Just trying to stay away from you guys. I don't want to get anyone sick, but I don't feel terrible.
All right. All right. I'm 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 glad. Uh, and uh, just want to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
Well, uh, we did see over a fifty percent increase in flow at the wastewater plant over the weekend, so I've been going around trying to figure out where that's coming from.
That's pretty significant. Five oh fifty fifty percent?
Yeah, we went from going from about two hundred thousand a day to three hundred and eleven was yesterday's total.
Wow.
We saw, right, we saw quite a bump from that little rainstorm we had yesterday, too.
Gotcha. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for their that update. I don't have anything other than uh, the next work session, and a regular meeting will be uh, in two weeks on uh, June twenty fourth. And before I adjourn, I want to make sure uh, there isn't anything uh, from anyone else that I'd like to share?
I actually have something.
Yes.
Kudos to Public Works. Thank you for getting those um, silver signs, you know, like the crosswalk signs. I watched them being used in Houston over the past week, and they really helped because this weekend was really busy, and it stopped that current flow, that constant flow, so I wasn't trying to race across the road and not get hit. So, thank you. Thank you for getting.
Yeah, Lisa, I agree. There's been a lot of good input on those. And uh, we're looking at maybe adding some more. We'll have to add a a second or third signal because some of our crosswalks are so close together on the same signal, it'll just trigger a bunch at once. So uh, I'll do a little bit more investigating whether we get something.
I wondered about that. I wondered if it would be worth it to put them on more crosswalks, but the ones that they're on, I think they're really effective.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll I'll double check. Um, and uh, I also just want to point out that Maria is helping us out, uh, shorthanded tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And want to make sure you didn't have anything you wanted to share tonight? All right. Uh, Nick, uh, it's usually on our agenda. Uh, is there any uh, reason to have executive sessions tonight?
No, I don't.
Just double check. Thank you, sir. Uh, all right. Uh, anything further from anyone else?